Hi, good evening. My name is Steven Bryan. I'm the Regional Director for the Siskiyou Community Resource Collaborative. And one of my main priorities is the City of Dunsborough and the Dunsborough Community Resource Center. I wanted to speak about Read Across Siskiyou, which is the first five Siskiyou and Family and Community Resource Center event that we put on every year. This year will be the 11th anniversary of that. We will be distributing over 2,000 books throughout the county to young children. We'll have readers on November 14th reading throughout the county. Bruce, our Mayor, and Dave Kaiser will be there to read also. If anybody's interested, there's more information in your packet. Inside your packet, on the right side, is the guest reader flyer if you'd like to be a guest reader. Just behind that, we have a list of first five Siskiyou priorities and achievements. And you can see that reading is one of our top priorities. Early literacy is very important. And some of the reasons why is children introduced to reading early on tend to read earlier and excel in school compared to children who are not exposed to language and books at a young age. And reading, rhyming, singing, and talking, beginning from birth profoundly influence literacy and language development, the foundations of all other learning. And more than one in three American children start kindergarten without the skills they need to learn to read. And there's a lot of research in there about reading and the importance of reading. One of them is third grade levels of reading. If a child makes it to third grade and they're not reading at grade level, the outcomes further on in life for that child get very dim. If you look at incarceration rates, Sheriff Lopey shared a lot of statistics with me. Eighty-five percent of people that are incarcerated have a reading challenge, whether they can't read at all or they can barely read. So, early literacy is very important for not only young children but the community at large. And I know we're always talking about building more jails. What we should do is be distributing more books and encouraging more people to read. Another benefit of reading aloud is reading...I have a...let me start. I have a fourth grader and a sixth grader. I still read to them nightly. And there's studies that show that you should be reading to your children out loud until they're in eighth grade. And reasons why are it builds motivation, curiosity, and memory. It helps children cope during times of stress or anxiety, which we can all relate to. Take children to places and times they've never been, enlarging and enhancing their words, and creates a positive association with books and reading. And that's the main goal, is to get children interested in reading and encourage them to have a better outcome in life. And then also on the right side is the Dolly Parton Imagination Library information. I'm not sure how many people know about this. I know Rotary members do. They're a big supporter here in Dunsborough. Currently, right now, we have, I believe, seventy-three, zero to five children in the City of Dunsborough receiving books every month in the mail from the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. And that comes from generous donors. For just $25, you can support one child, they'll get 12 books throughout the year. And the children get really excited. The parents always come and tell me, as soon as they see the mailman coming down the street, they're running out the front door to go read them. So, it's a great program. Children love it. Reading is very important. Another thing I wanted to share with you on the left side is more information about the Dunsborough Community Resource Center and all the activities we're involved in and how we benefit the community of Dunsborough. And we're always looking for support and volunteers. If anybody's ever interested to help out, please reach out to us. I know several of you already are. Bruce is on our big board for Siskiyou Community Resource Collaborative. And we have an advisory board in South County with Linda Sheban and Peter Art also. So, we have a lot of caring, involved citizens, and we really appreciate that. So, I wanted to thank you for that. Also, on November the 13th coming up at the high school, I want to invite everybody to come out. We're going to have a community event. There's going to be a free dinner. There's going to be raffle prizes, including a Chromebook from the John Lopey Foundation. There's going to be a crop pot full of a meal that you can take home and cook. That's being donated by the Ford Family Foundation. We also have Karen Quinn from the libraries donating a lot of nice books, and we have some other great raffle prizes. And the main goal of the event is to speak to food security in Dunsborough to get the information out on different food programs continuously going on in the community. And we will be passing out brochures, the list, all of those activities and where they're at in the community for anybody that needs help with food assistance. Yes, Bruce?
Turkey, ham.
Yes. So, part of the event also, the Resource Center, every year, we partner with GNS and with St. Vincent de Paul, and we do a turkey, chicken, ham distribution for Thanksgiving. This year, it's going to be at the event at the high school on the 13th. We're trying to encourage as many people to attend as possible. So, we'll be doing the food distribution, free dinner, raffle prizes. There'll be guest speakers from the county, from the City of Dunsborough, myself, Susan Keeler, and Ray Keller, and Bruce will be there also.
And that will be at what time, Steve?
That'll be at 5:30 on Tuesday, November the 13th.
At the high school. 5:30 at the high school on the 13th.
Exactly. Free dinner, great raffle prizes, guest speakers, a lot of great information.
Child care.
Child care will be provided. It's a really great community event. We encourage all to come. And so, on November the 14th, please read to children, wherever you are, whether it's your grandchildren, whether it's your neighbor, whether you're at a school, whether you're at the Resource Center. Pick up a book and read to somebody. And thank you very much for your time. Do we have any questions?
Thank you for doing what you're doing, man.
I did want to say that one of the reasons we're looking at the way we are and trying to get as many people is because Ray Keller and Susan Keeler both know that the funds that we need to support the programs they have, free food, things like that, all depend on the number of parents that are signed up with their kids. So, if people don't go out of their way to actually sign up and say, "I'm here, I'm using this program," then the funds diminish, and we're seeing that happen on a regular basis going down and down. So, our goal with this event is to get as many people there who have representatives, first five, and the other organizations, so they can get them all assigned into there and we can help raise the amount of money we can throughout the city.
Exactly. And we sincerely want to encourage parents to look past the stigma or anything as far as self-certifying and getting your children enrolled in these programs, because the schools are still going to feed these kids, but now the schools are taking the brunt of not getting that funding back. So, there's a lot of funds out there, even to programs like SNAP Ed and CalFresh. I think it's something like forty percent of the county who qualifies doesn't even have...has not enrolled in the program, which costs the county millions and millions of dollars that could be coming in to support food security.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, moving on to committee reports. I'll start off with economic development and tourism. We have a meeting scheduled for Tuesday, November 13th at 2:00 p.m. And the two items we're going to have on there, the first one is going to be moving forward with the development outside the airport, to the east of the airport. We're working right now and coming up with preliminary vision of how that will fit together. We're looking at putting in, right now, the plan is two or three tilt-ups that would allow us to start the process moving forward. But right before we do anything, we have to worry about zoning. Right now, the zone is residential, and we're going to be looking at zoning it as light industrial or some other process. So, we'll be looking at that and also at trying to see what we can do going forward to enhance our image as a tourist town, a trail town, try to be the second trail town. I know everyone wanted to be the first, but to do that, we're going to have to, as a city, get together and figure out what we're missing, what we need to get, how to get it, and how to let the people know we have it. So, I want to start moving ahead with that, and this will be our first chance to talk about that. The other thing else, Mark?
Just that the meeting will be held at the Chamber versus the Commerce, Chamber of Commerce.
Okay. Finance, I guess we didn't have a meeting on finance, is that right? Okay, public facilities and services, same. Airports. So, we're having a meeting either the second Tuesday or the third Tuesday, and where are we at in the process right now?
Well, currently in the process, we have, we had an airport committee meeting, I think we, about two or three weeks ago. Very well attended. We had the consultants on the phone that did the air...worked on finalizing the airport layout plan. We received a draft of that. We talked about what was in the airport layout plan, and then we also talked about the pavement management plan and where we're going with engineering of that in hopes of the, some of the $1 billion federal grant money that was made available. And we've also looked at having the engineers work more directly with the staff, with what's going on out there at the airport, and that seems to be working well, primarily with our Public Works Supervisor, Bill, who's been out there helping to ensure that the airport is closed when they're out there doing the surveying, core drilling, and all, in coordination with the pilots. So, Bill's been doing a great job of making sure everything's right smoothly between the airport functions and our cluttering and doing.
To me, I've heard people say over the past that the airport is for ten pilots from Mount Chaska. I see this as part parcel of the development we're envisioning out at the airport, being able to provide customers with not only access to an interstate, which a lot of people can do, but also access right there into a, an airport. The exciting news we're waiting right now to hear, should be here at a time now to find out if we've got any discretionary funds. We believe we are in a good position to do that, and what we're looking at is the possibility of receiving about $2 billion of no-match funding to completely redo our runways and taxiways. So, that would give us an airport that would, I think, fit right together with the idea of building a community of small industrial companies out there to the east of the airport. Next thing, emergency planned task force, anything else on that?
I would like to know. I'm not sure if it fits in this. We had Arlene, our planner, Arlene Dukes and myself were on a conference call with FEMA. I think that was yesterday, noon at 3:00. Where they got word that we're applying for the grant funds to do the emergency hazard mitigation plan. So, we talked with some of the members from FEMA and went through what we can do to help get prepared for the future of natural disasters. One of the things that I did after the meeting was send them the feasibility study from the Butterfly Bridge. That was one of the things they wanted to look out, and they wanted to make sure when it goes out for engineering that it is considered, some of these things are considered with the bridge as well. And what are some of the things that could be done between the countywide, which is in the process, they've submitted their plan, and can we work and still get in with them as well? So, they're going to look into that. So, please move forward in regards to getting the hazard mitigation plan. Go on.
Thank you. Veterans Memorial, nothing on that right now?
I'll say one thing, that we've been trying to work with the county, the county Public Works, to work, assist us, our staff, to focus on three areas in the sidewalks to do a joint repair. And it's been, their schedules just hasn't worked. We haven't been able to get them out here. We're looking at getting one at a time. So, the Veterans Fund in particular is the one that we want them to work on first. We've been hoping to get them to work with our staff, because we only have two Public Works staff, and actually, we're down to one right now, but... So, we're trying to get assistance from the county to do that.
Got to go and say, right now, what we're waiting on is eventually, once we get some new energy coming in, is looking at putting in a memorial down here by the flagpole and cannon and bringing that into a citywide memorial that honor all the people who lost their lives, first responders, military. And I know that we need to replace the flagpole. I know Thompson Kaiser is big on that, and we're going to work on building that. Right now, we have a 40-foot flagpole that duns and gets ready to break whenever there's a strong wind. So, that's part of the plan moving forward, but we'll wait for the spring on that. Lost Break Trail, nothing new on that, I assume?
Well, I received an email about a week and a half ago, maybe two weeks, from Tom Hesleton with an update of the drawings. I haven't received any word, any new word of things moving forward, or that we need to send them. But still moving forward.
Beautification, no longer meeting, kind of a task force, we'll be talking about that. Okay, so, open the podium, the public audience.
Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the public, really just two items. One is, I remain unclear on what the city is going to do to celebrate Veterans Day later this month. The commitment was that whatever we did last Veterans Day, we'd do better this year. And I really think it is unfortunate if the city and the Veterans Committee has nothing planned to honor veterans later this month. The other is, as far as the committees listed that haven't met, another committee that hasn't met is our Committee on Sewer and Solid Waste Rates. I thought we had all agreed that we would link to present to the City Council in September, a presentation by PACE Engineering with recommendations from the committee in those two areas. And then we were going to do the Prop 218 process, trying to include citizens in what PACE is recommending. And then rates were going to be in place in January of 2019, which is now an impossible schedule to meet. And I don't understand why, because PACE Engineering said it is vital for the city to move on these issues, we're not moving. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Close and closing to public comment. Tom, do you want to answer that question?
Which one? The rate study?
Sewer rate study.
So, the solid waste and sewer rate study, as Mr. Art noted, was, we had a tentative schedule in place from the rate study committee to move forward, just as we noted. We received some questions about some of the ways we were looking to collect rates in the sewer, or I mean, the solid waste enterprise. After that, I met with legal counsel and with our rate study consultant, and we decided to, or I made the decision to remove those items out of the solid waste study. And then from there, we tried to push it through faster to get, to get the committees to meet again, because there was changes to what was last talked about from the solid waste rate committee. But unfortunately, our consultant was unable to attend, and we couldn't get the council meeting scheduled in time. And right now, the consultant, we had these timelines where there's two times where consultant, the one person, Paul Ruder, who's doing our rate study, he had these short windows, and we weren't able to meet those windows. So, he's expected to be back in the office this week. I think he came back in Wednesday, or it might have been today. So, waiting for him to get back and find out when he's going to come next night, we'll go back to it.
Thank you. Mister Chairman? Public, any comments? Mr. Spurlock?
No comments tonight, thank you.
Me also.
Okay, moving onward. Consent agenda. Oh, Mark, did you have anything you wanted to say?
The only thing I'll add is Blake is at the, a two-day board meeting was for his last slide.
All right.
Right on. Man, I'm sorry. Mr. Zuck, would you like to...Zoo, zoo? He said zuck. Zoo, zoo.
Yeah. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Deputies of Sheriff's Office, I'm here to report on September stats. For Dunsborough Patrol hours, we had a total of 524 hours of patrol. Total calls for service, this includes self-initiated, which would be traffic stops, security checks, all of the above. 182 total calls. Total miles driven, 2,091 miles that we put on in the city limits. Total cases were 12. Thirteen traffic stops, issued 10 citations, and made six arrests, two felony arrests, four misdemeanor arrests. Out of those cases we pulled, we had assault battery, one was off of a welfare check, domestic violence call, runaway juvenile, a couple of burglaries, residential burglaries, a child abuse case, petty theft. The other cases were self-initiated, traffic stop, and then consensual encounter, where we contact people and talk to them, and sometimes that leads into warrant arrests, and sometimes they had a drug on them, things like that.
Anything else in terms of anything happening, trends in the city that we should be concerned about at this time?
I've been working night shift down here since July. We're about to rotate, we're running back to days, but I have worked in night shifts, seen definitely a little bit increased in criminal activity. More drug activity and more people out in the valley at night prowling. On our next city council meeting, we'll report on the stats for October, which you'll see. We have been doing a lot. We've been more, way more proactive.
We already had a field day this morning. Like, thank you for that.
Yeah, yeah, there was a search warrant.
There's a lot of people that want to thank you guys for that.
That was, that was a great case. I don't have all the details, I can't really report on it, but there was a search warrant issued, or served this morning by our task force that resulted in some arrests and seizure of drugs. I'm sure there's going to be a press release on that.
We'll look at that.
There was also, I was involved in a high school pursuit last week, which actually began on South First outside of the city limits. It went all the way down to Castella. So, we're still, ended with a guy crashing into a tree and taking footbail. We didn't unfortunately catch him, did officer safety at the time, but we're working that case still. But there has been several arrests made in October for drug-related stuff. So, we're cracking down. We have squad meetings this week. We'll be talking and do our best to try to boost up this patrol as much as we can down here, try to fight this. But I can tell you, we're doing our best, doing our best. We have, you know, some great deputies down here, we're doing what we can. I hate to sit here and talk about negatives, maybe, you know, all the negative stuff, but, you know, there's also a lot of positive and good people in Dunsborough that are helping us. Neighborhood watch going on, and, you know, we have had a lot of citizen support stuff that was very helpful and helped us, you know, address the problem and do what we had to do. So, I think we're all working well together, it's going to be a...
Thank you. I want to take a two-minute break here. I realize it's a problem over there, I need to resolve, so two-minute break, we'll be right back. Meeting back to order. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
I made the motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Ed passes, 4-0. Okay, next, no public hearing, no law of business. The only new business we have is a cannabis task force. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The Cannabis Task Force met on October 9th, and we had our city attorney in the audience there, part of staff, and the draft zoning ordinance was placed before the Cannabis Task Force. They went through all of the different zoning items within what's allowed and what's not allowed, and the conditions that may be allowed, and made a recommendation to move, to move the zoning ordinance to the Planning Commission, which is currently set to be in November, the third Wednesday in November. And at the end of the meeting, a motion was made and seconded and passed unanimously to ask the City Council to disband the Cannabis Task Force as the job is complete. And I just want to note that the, this Cannabis Task Force had met, I believe, 17, 18 times, spent well over 40 hours on a topic that had a lot of details to it. So, really want to thank them and commend them for a job well done.
Absolutely. Mr. Shaka, you're on. Did you like saying anything?
No, we're glad we are at some point, if we can, pull this aside.
See the results here, Bill?
No, we're pretty far away from that yet. At least the past four months has gone in.
Okay, any questions from the council?
I would like...
We can have a discussion, we have questions.
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Open the podium, public comment?
Still Peter Art, and it's disappointing that Councilmember Craig is not in attendance tonight, because I believe there were 17 or 18 meetings, any number of them were contentious. It was hard, hard work by the citizens, members of the Planning Commission, and members of the City Council. And I think Councilmember Craig, his first time in public office, did a fantastic job of leading our community to consensus on the difficult issue of cannabis. So, I salute him in absentia.
Thank you, I agree. Anybody else? Close voting, public comment. Mr. Fesher?
I wanted to echo what Mark was saying and what Peter Art was saying. I commend everybody that served on this committee. I know it couldn't have been easy. I know it couldn't have been fun. I know it wouldn't mean. So, I commend you guys for putting in the time and effort and energy and getting us to this point. So, my hat's off to you, and I thank you for your services.
Just to direct some comments, Mr. Art, and suppose briefly with Brian's perspective, Brian, before you came, before I came to this meeting, yeah?
There you go.
Yeah, get the words, I promise. He said that he wasn't going to make the meeting just because he's got some family obligations tonight, but it's exactly what he said. It was a long time of the, in the efforts that was going on, and he said it was a lot of meetings involved, a lot of time spent. And I want to add your comments as well, saying that it's a job well done. Certainly want to give some respect for the time and efforts that were put into it.
As he would be doing.
He didn't want to be here tonight, but family...
You're on your hands.
Actually, I'd like to do a little bit more. Maybe we could have at the next meeting, invite the members here, have a special ceremony to thank them. I think that they kind of did form a critical part of our history here in the community, and I'd like to give them more of a shout-out than a couple of claps.
I think anybody really would like people.
Really?
I think we're glad and...
So far.
Okay.
So, they were just probably glad to be part of the building block.
Our, okay? I'll take that. Any other questions or comments? We don't have a recommended motion, do we?
No.
I make a motion that we gave the city manager's advice and the request of them, and we make a motion disband the Cannabis Task Force with...
Thanks.
With all of our gratitude and thanks.
Okay. Second to that? All second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. They deserve all the credit they probably aren't going to get.
And he said there's nothing else on the agenda. Mr. Mayor, may I have a moment?
Sure.
I just want to say that this is probably the last meeting with the company alls, and it has been an honor to serve on this council with you guys. I feel that we've kept this ability. We've had a cohesive council that I've been proud to be part of. I look forward and I pray to God that this council remains with that same civility and respect we have for each other. We don't always agree, but we come here to do the business of the people. It ain't about you, it ain't about me, it's about everybody on the other side of these walls. So, I thank you guys. Bryce Craig, I thank you for your service. Josh Spurlock, I thank you for your service. It's been an honor, my friend.
We'll look around for public media.
Mari Shanta, I thank you for your service, and I look forward to you being in that chair for another four years.
Thank you.
All right?
I said, "Don't cut me out."
I'm not. I am not. I love the marquee, by the way. I love the marquee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I really appreciate the people who put that there on the marquee.
That was nice. I think we should just call him Mari's marquee.
Yeah. Don't get carried away, dude. Come on.
Actually, Josh, it's been a pleasure.
They all plug in their...
Had Bryce here, I would be saying the same, you know, face to face. It's been a pleasure, and I don't know. So, good luck.
Thank you. Any other business announcements we would like to bring up at this point? Um, I'm...
I, I, one more thing. I would like to give everybody, you, the city, the Rotary, the pat on the back for the dinner, for the fireman the other night, I think everybody that was involved in outstanding dinner, I think it was great. I think they had it coming, I know there's salt, I was like, "Good, good for the, eh, there we are," I just want to give you a pat on the back, so I, I, I'm sorry that it was a fire that brought us to that, you know? I lived for 19 days, and everything, I own the front door of my house, ready to go. I don't like that, so I commend you, and I think it was a well-deserved dinner that we pulled off, and it was pretty good, so I just wanted to put that out there and thank everybody. This lady right here made about a million desserts, so just heard, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Julie? Julie, just okay?
I did, just wanted to let everybody know, the chief notes that normally today is the opening of the burn season for Dunsmere community first, and that has been withdrawn. Josh, you're familiar with that as well. CalFire has continued to restrict any Doryark burning, we took a quick call, and it will be announced hopefully in the next couple of weeks, that it will be opened, just depending on any precipitation that we have, it's just still dry.
So let's reiterate that, everybody out there, it's still a no burn. We're still under a no burn.
Yes, Mark.
These are important things we need to know, so thank you.
Mark, I'll take quick regards to the firemen. I know, I understand that there was a breakdown somewhere in communication, so that the people that were supposed to be there really didn't know. So what I'd like to do is, could schedule for the next meeting to have them officially invited, and to continue to give them the awards that we gave out to the two that were there, Mr. Howman and Mr. Spurlock. I think this is a unique opportunity for us as a city. We tend to rely on the firefighters and assume that they're going to be there, and they don't often get a chance to get any recognition. This seems like an opportune time to give them our city's real respect, and so I'd like to follow up with what we did at the dinner the other night and give them some formal recognition that they can take home. I understand that the medal that Adam Howman sent, received, his wife is already talking about having a special place to put it, so to them, that represents something special. I'd like to make sure we follow them.
Hell, yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, one more. You know, I've been asking, and I feel like I've been getting load off, I don't know whose fault that is, but in case nobody else but me recognized, you guys see how many cars were parked up there by Mossberry Falls for the last couple of weekends? I had a guy, a friend of mine, counted, he counted over 700 people that went to Mossberry Falls on Saturday, and it was cold. So again, I'm asking if we could discuss parking meters up there in Old Town, until we get everything worked out, we're losing an opportunity to make some money here.
The other problem with that, though, is we're going to be moving to the point where people are going to Mossberry some time.
And the parking meters are still going to be there, and people can still give me my $4, give them to the state for us, you know, we want $4 a car to park there for the day. Well, it's $4 a bus, everybody pay it, and if you times it, you get like 50 parking meters up in there, 30 to 50.
But what happens when we have the start of the trail, the hedgerie?
Okay, what about it?
Then all of a sudden, nobody's going to be able to go to those parking meters because it's going to be blocked by fences. We have to look forward and plan ahead for hedgeries, that's where the parking will be done.
What, fences?
I don't think you understand. A comic, you know, especially, I think it's an important topic, but this might be something we should address after the meeting.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
How about we have a vote?
Do I still do it on the agenda?
Make financial adjournments.
Five times.
I think Washington is very busy.
Make some motion, do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.